We'll call the things of order. Roque.
McKnight.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Roja.
Here.
Vogel.
Here.
Kinder.
Stand for the pledge, ladies and gentlemen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to your color, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with the great justice of all.
Please remember to turn your cell phones, iPhones off, and I'll try to remind you to turn them back on after the meeting.
Deputy Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to strike from tonight's agenda, item 9A, authorizing signatures on independent contractor agreement. City of Meadville, Chad Montgomery. That's a motion to.
Motion made.
I second that motion.
Roque.
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Roja.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye. So I think that what that means is that anyone who signed up to speak for that, that's now a non-agenda item, so you can still give your public comment. That'll be at that end.
Notice of the executive sessions?
No executive sessions have been held since the last meeting.
Are there other, are there public comments in other? I don't see.
Bob, what did you sign up to speak about? Hiring and?
Everything. I want to talk everything.
Okay. It looks like you wrote two things down.
Yes, I did.
What are they, hiring and?
Rent, I think.
And then.
Rental?
Rental inspection unit, which you posted, we could talk about.
Right, yeah, as a non-agenda item at the end. Yeah, oh, so that was, that's the other thing too. So our agenda originally posted included conversation of rental licensing program per recommendation from our city solicitor. That was, was removed from the agenda as well prior to the meeting today. Contracted.
Okay. So I may have a motion that I have three minutes.
So moved.
Second, can I ask, Jim, can I ask a question about the minutes of the last meeting? When you wanted, oh, did you ask?
In discussion?
Oh, sorry.
Second?
I'll second, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we second you?
You second.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, so I did second it, and then I just jumped into it, yeah. Did you, on that, did you want the, the one public session to be, was that the Thursday session that you wanted to be 11 to 1, or the Saturday? I was confused.
Saturday.
Oh, Saturday.
Okay, thanks. See, I just took it down wrong. Just, I wanted to recheck.
Is it in the minutes?
It's in the minutes, correct. It was me, I took it down wrong, yeah. That's it. Thank you.
Communications?
The Republican.
Oh, I'm sorry.
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Roja.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
And now on to communications.
Counsel has received any communication.
All right, thank you. Maryam, manager's report.
The only thing I have tonight is to introduce Bob Zaruda from Knox Law Firm. He will be here on some occasions instead of Tim, so I'll let him introduce himself a little bit.
So I'm Bob Zaruda, I'm a partner at the Knox Law Firm. My focus is labor and employment. I will on occasion fill in for Tim, who will be here for most of the regular meetings. But my specialty is going to be labor and employment items, so I'll be assisting the city with respect to those things. Well, thank you.
Ah, let's see, councilor's subcommittee reports. Ultimate economics?
Nothing.
Nothing? Community engagement?
Um, we have, I'm gonna say two things. So we've got, our committee reviewed the survey results from the public survey we did about how to allocate American Rescue Plan Act dollars, which I imagine city staff will go into in a minute. But, but in terms of other updates, reports from our committee, the environmental advisory council met today for the first time. I attended that meeting. I'd like to keep attending and am willing to act as the council liaison, which is provided for in the ordinance. I don't know if we need like a vote of that or consensus of council.
Consensus.
So I'm willing to keep going.
If you're willing.
And report back.
Do we need to vote or just a consensus?
That's.
Jim?
Yeah.
Okay, presentation of ARCA survey results.
So in your packets and on the screens here is a presentation that Katie put together to go over the ARCA survey results. So we saw 172 people responding. This graph gives a breakdown of how many city residents, property owners, but not city residents, those who work in the city and those who own businesses in the city. This listed six top favorable responses. And this can, this should be noted that this combines both strongly agree and strongly and somewhat disagree in the percentages here, but the overall number one response was to use the funds to balance the 2023 budget. And then you see them, you know, go down, invest in infrastructure, matching funds for grants, sidewalk improvements, ongoing park maintenance, software upgrades for the city. This is just a list of the unfavorable responses. Again, this combines the strongly disagree with the somewhat disagree, parking garage rehabilitation, development of new housing, purchase and rehab of homes, immediate repair, upgrades, repair location of public works garage, and develop a land bank for future rehab or development. So these are the breakdown of the strongly disagree, somewhat agree, strongly disagree, somewhat disagree, or neutral concerning the topic of balancing the 2023 budget. It's just a breakdown. I believe the subcommittee had asked to see that specific breakdown between the two, the different somewhat and strongly categories.
Yeah, I think we just wanted to know, like, what was eliciting a really strong response from people? So that's helpful.
So this, again, this really just goes through those top six and breaks down the strongly and somewhat categories in each of those six. I don't know if counsel wants me to go through those individually.
Beg your pardon?
Do you want me to go through those individually or?
No, I don't personally.
So some of the, the top six, there are things that are going on aside from ARCA funds that could be used to address that priority for the public. So city software is an example. We're revising our stamp grant application to cover costs of more city software. City infrastructure, applying for a grant through the Appalachian Regional Commission to help with feasibility studies. This addresses parking garage. We will also look to apply for any infrastructure grants that come down from the federal government and are dispersed by either the state or county.
Do we have any updates from Jason? I know we asked last time.
Ah, no.
The timing of, of open windows and stuff wasn't important.
We have a meeting Friday, staff has a meeting Friday with Jason. The Heidi Cooper Park has taken priority, given some of those grant funding.
All the money.
Yes. So, and park maintenance, continuing to work with stakeholders and grant money is to improve the condition of parks. So there are some, there is some work that staff is already doing on those top six priorities that were identified.
Sorry. There's a few grant projects that I am not familiar with that are listed. And would you love to hear more about them tonight? Or if you could send just maybe a follow-up with like, a little kind of summary?
Yeah, we can do a summary. Some of these are not in progress. Some of these are down the pipeline.
Sure.
Slated to be in progress. So staff can send an update and a description of each of those listed.
That would be. So, so the takeaway for me here is that like there is, there's movement on some of the items that were included. And it came out as, as some of the high priority items for the public. There's movement already that we might not necessarily need to allocate.
Correct. And then the subcommittee had discussed the number, number four priority, sidewalk improvement plan and program. And it was mentioned at the time that Titusville is doing a similar program on side improvement on sidewalks with their CDVG funds. And that's an avenue that we could certainly explore as well. So there's some different funding opportunities for these top six, some of these top six that we can explore.
So kind of looking across what ranked as the top six priority items against where there's movement going on, it does seem like maybe the sidewalk improvement plan and program, maybe some degree matching funds for grants, and obviously the budget are the three that like aren't already being tackled.
So the recommendation that came out of the subcommittee meeting was to recommend the council to allocate the entire via of the ARCA funds to balancing the 2023 city budget.
To go.
To be towards that. That is, you'll receive your budget books tonight. You will see in that, to help balance the budget, all of the ARCA funds were allocated to the 2023 budget.
Any other questions, Jim?
Not on that. There's some finance comments for tonight.
All right, anything else on it?
I'll just, oh, I just reminder that like the items that came out and that were included in the survey that we're talking about were from various plans, right? They're all things that we haven't been able to do yet because we didn't have the money to do them. So that's where this, most of this stuff is coming from. So it's good to know where people's, where people want to see us focus our resources. So I appreciate everyone who participated.
My name's?
Yeah, something very brief. Tim, Maryam, and April were working on a project. We'll be asked to pass a resolution tonight. It's fiscally prudent and financially astute, so I think that it is in the best interest of the city to act favorably on it. Tim can explain it more in detail when the time comes.
Is that the bonds?
That's the custody agreement. Oh.
Do you invest it? Yeah.
Old business?
None.
None? New business? Authorized signatures, independent contractor agreements been taken off. So we'll move to be authorized signatures, entity account resolution, and custody agreement, City of Meadville and Stifle.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville authorizing signatures on an entity account resolution and custody agreement between the City of Meadville and Stifle Nicholas and Company. Resolve that the, that the city council, the City of Meadville approves the entity account resolution with Stifle Nicholas and Company, which is fully incorporated as if more fully set forth herein, authorizing the creation of an investment account and to make investments as authorized in an approved investment policy statement. And the custody agreement was Zion Bank Corporation National Association. And be it further resolved that Mr. Tim Grove, City of Meadville Finance Director, is authorized and empowered to enter into and execute those documents and agreements that may be necessary to effectuate the purpose of this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Roque?
Can we discuss this? Yeah.
So as, as investment interest rates have been rising, the local banks that we deal with have not been able to keep up. And so as we looked at the US Treasury bonds, they were quite a bit higher, as much as maybe 2% to 2.5% higher than what we're getting locally. To, in order to secure them, you have to enter into an agreement with somebody, trustee, that can buy and sell those US Treasuries for us. Part of that, though, is that we want to buy and sell them, but we want them to not hold the security itself, and that's what the custody agreement is with Zion Bank, that they will physically hold the security that we buy. Now, obviously, this is 100% guaranteed by the US government, and that's what allows the, the City of Meadville to invest in these. We certainly don't have the ability to have local funds invested in general bond market stuff, but US Treasuries are one of the allowable things. So we wanted to try this because we weren't getting the interest rates from the local banks that we usually have done. We also have another avenue that we've looked at and we've used occasionally is the Pennsylvania Local Government Investment Trust. They're paying a little bit higher now, but they're not even close to the US Treasury rates. So that's where we brought this, and we've been working on this for a couple of months now, to try to make sure that it's completely safe, that we don't lose money. We don't want to invest in something that we potentially want to lose our money. That's not, that's not the goal. But it is a goal to make a little extra money on our investment, so that's what this will do.
How much does it cost, like how much does the trustee cost us?
The trustee will cost us 15 basis points, so that's.
15 hundredths of one percent.
Yeah, one eighth of a percent. So it's, it's an amazing rate for, for what they're gonna be doing. So, gosh, I can't remember. They were trading at 3.49%, so we, we would still make 3.35% or something like that. So it's pretty great on the amount of money that it costs us to do it.
Now, which is about.
1.75. So we're talking almost 2% interest rate. So we're talking, you know, maybe 10,000, 12,000 a month that we're gonna earn extra, even more. Now Zion Bank incredibly is gonna charge us a flat 800 bucks. That's it for the year. 800 bucks to do all the holding of securities and all the transfer they have to do.
And that's annually or just?
Annually, yep.
How long is that?
That would be an annual amount. And now, now Zion has always done our bond payments.
Right.
And so we, I don't, too concerned about that.
Sure. No, I guess, how, how long, like, is that contract for? Right, so it's an annual payment, but.
With Zion.
The perpetuity of that?
You know what, I didn't look to see if there's an end date on the custodial agreement. Generally, they're not an end date because when I tell them I don't want the securities anymore, I simply will send them a letter and say the contract's canceled.
Right. I guess I just want, like, can they come back to us and say, it was 800, but we're gonna?
Um, in a year, I potentially could do that. I don't see them doing it because they've done our bond payments for probably 10 years now at a very nice rate, so I don't anticipate them doing anything like that. And again, if they do, then we, we maybe find another custodial bank to, to handle it.
Tim watches that stuff very closely.
Is there any negative side effect, like with built relationship with the local bank?
Um, no, I notified the local bank, and they understand that they're also citizens of Meadville. They understand the goal is to earn money for the citizens. And they understand if their bank can't compete, then it can't compete.
Tim, correct me if I'm wrong. Anything over a quarter of a million dollars for a depositor is not FDIC insured, whereas this would be guaranteed by the federal government.
This is, now, just understand, our local bank that we use is Marquette Bank. Even when we have a CD with them, they guarantee it with collateralization of their funds on hand, which is, I believe, Act 72 is the rule for banks that have to collateralize up to 10% more than what deposits municipal bank or municipal municipalities have on hand. So they make sure even our CDs are collateralized.
Good.
So, and we get a letter from them that they're following the Act 72.
So this is moving money that we have invested that's already set aside and invested in these local banks. If this is that same money, this isn't money coming from any particular other funds?
No, 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 we're just gonna transfer from this to a different one. And I think Tim has gone over it pretty much detailed to make sure that, that the city is protected and with the investment that's allowable by law.
I wonder if, and I please correctly or tell me that I'm, I'm off on this, but does it make any sense to name an additional authorized individual? I, I love you, Tim, and I respect you very much, but I, are you?
Well, thank you for that.
But are you, you're contracted, right?
Yes.
With the, so I, like, does it make sense to have someone?
We could have the city manager included also. I think we just, I think we did that, Tim just put it on there because you're authorizing an individual at least handle these contractual agreements with, with Stifle.
So I guess I just, like, I hope you stay, but like.
In the past, some, not agreements exactly like this, but similar agreements where the finance director is given charge to sign documents is listed as just finance director. There's no name associated with that. So when finance directors change, if they were to change, then it just transfers the title that has the ability to do that, not the individual. So we could probably amend the resolution to just list finance director just as a generality.
And once these contracts are signed, you're not gonna re-sign them again. So council's given authorization just to sign these documents.
Initiation.
Exactly.
Okay.
I will, I will move to amend if you would like.
A second.
Roque?
And that, sorry, that's just amending to, to re-finance director.
The finance director, yes. We need to vote on the amendment and then on the.
So McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roja?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
That's the amendment.
Not on the, not on the ordinance, but the legislation.
And we already moved and seconded that. This is the special. There are other discussion on?
I'm good.
Do you want to call for Roque?
Jim, you're good. Fine, Roque?
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roja?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
We've lost the money.
Let's hope so. All right. Enter authorization and signatures and memorandum of understanding. City of Meadville, Crawford County.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville authorizing signatures on a memorandum of understanding between the City of Meadville and the County of Crawford for the loaning of the Crawford County Department of Public Safety carmate trailer to the City of Meadville Fire Department for hazardous materials response.
I will so move.
A second.
Discussion?
This is pretty much the resolution, sums it up. This is a trailer that the Crawford County Department of Public Safety had, that they're willing to loan out to the city for use of hazardous materials. So there'll be extra ropes, rescue, vehicle rescue. This will also allow our fire department to become certified in vehicle rescue, and that would make them the only department in the county to be so certified. As part of this, the county will continue to pay the insurance on the trailer and pay for any maintenance expenses. The city will be responsible for conducting just monthly maintenance reviews of the trailer. Legal counsel has reviewed the MOU and has approved of it.
As far as equipment, they have, the fire department will, will keep updating equipment, or is that gonna be, you know, ropes and all that's gonna be provided? But in the ongoing, is that on the city or just the fire department?
So what they would store, they have it, they have much of this material already at the fire department, just not a vehicle to store it in and take it to different accidents and things like that. So this would allow them to have those. As far as ropes, they have their own. Those are under a, I think, a 10 to 12-year replacement schedule that they have to go through. So it's our responsibility, no matter what, to replace those items.
It's not outfitted, it's just the trailer.
That's, yeah.
Yes, who does, do you know anything about the certification? Who does it, how often? I was just like, favorite.
I, I don't know, but I can find out and from Pat quietly.
Yeah, that would be interesting.
Our thanks to the county. That's great.
Yeah.
Roque?
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roja?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
And a motion to authorize signature revision of FY 2018, FY 2021 CDVG revision request, Market House Existing Building Condition and Assessment Plan.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, authorizing a revision of the fiscal year 2018 and fiscal year 2021 Community Development Block Grant Programs for Development of Meadville Market House Existing Building Conditions Assessment Plan, resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that whereas Act 179 of 1984 established the Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Program to financially assist municipalities with several community development needs to benefit low and moderate income citizens. And whereas the City of Meadville in a resolution dated October 17th, 2018, authorized the submission of an application for a total allocation of $296,249 to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for funding through fiscal year 2018 CDVG Program for Street Improvements, Flight Removal Code Enforcement and Program Administration. And whereas the City of Meadville in a resolution dated October 6, 2021, authorized the submission of an application for a total allocation of $330,745 to DCEB for funding through the fiscal year 2021 CDVG Program for Code Enforcement, Fairview Fairmont Apartment Improvements, Heidi Cooper Park Improvements and Program Administration. And whereas the City of Meadville is formally revising the fiscal year 2018 Program Administration Funds to make $16,621.63 available and fiscal year 2021 CDVG Program Administration Funds to make $2,891.47 available to fund the Market House Existing Building Conditions Assessment Plan currently funded out of the fiscal year 2019 and fiscal year 2020 CDVG Programs, now therefore be resolved that the City of Meadville does officially approve the revision of the fiscal year 2018 and fiscal year 2021 CDVG Programs to include the Market House Existing Building Conditions Assessment Plan.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
As council mayor calls, the city is using its CDVG planning money to help the market authority hire a historic architect to do an evaluation and assessment on the Market House. This assessment, as a reminder, will open the market authority up to some different historic preservation grants that they are not currently eligible for because they do not have this type of assessment done. The city sent out RFPs, request for proposals, for this historic architect and only received one response. This was from Design Lab, which is a firm out of Boston. Their quote was 29,000 and did not include travel time for its staff. We estimate that the total cost, which would now include the travel time, would be around $32,000. The city had already allocated some funding. We need to allocate a little bit more of the CDVG funding to make up the difference in the proposal.
Is it easier and cheaper, like, to just reopen the bids? Can we do that? Like for the, can we get more proposals?
Um, we, we could try to do that if council wanted to. I can't guarantee that we would get, we've reached out individually to different architects. This is a known architect in the area. They've done some things in Oil City, Hollin House, that they're working on now. We, we could, if council wanted to go that route.
For professional service, are we obliged to obtain a competitive bid? Or may we go out and pick a provider?
The, per DCEB guidelines, which, because we're using CDVG funding, we have to have a competitive bid submitted to us. So we have to go through this process.
And we send out RFPs to various people and?
And we published, correct?
Yeah, there's always one, okay.
So does this mean that we were under, we came in under budget for administration for 2018 and 2021? Is that why there's money to move?
We draw down typically two years after a CDVG year, funding year. So we didn't draw this amount of money down in 2020. It needs to be drawn down because it will, the time to use it will close here shortly, I think March of next year. We just, it's just money we haven't drawn down yet.
I just know that we, it's my understanding, I guess I don't know this, but it's my understanding that these project administration fees help to offset some staff cost and time.
That's correct.
So I wonder if there's more room to do that, like if it makes sense to move, like Heidi Cooper Park. I don't know, we've got all this money, but like, maybe. I don't know, we've got all this money, but like, maybe some money. Just trying to, anyway, I'm sure you've thought through all this, so probably don't need to get into this.
A caveat of using CDVG money in a planning initiative is that it has to come out of administrative funds to do that. Otherwise, it has to go through the vetting process that DCED mandates to qualify a project. So we could not use project funds to do that. It has to be administrative.
Any other questions, comments? Ro call?
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roja?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Comment on non-agenda items? Frank?
Hi, my name's Frank Keely, and I'm a resident and taxpayer of Meadville. I came to address the hiring of independent contractor tonight, but I know it's not on the agenda. However, I hope what I have to say will be pertinent because I'm sure it probably will come back up on the agenda. There seems to be a lot of rumors about, floating around about the position. I'm not here to address rumors, couldn't care less about rumors. I am here to address some confusion about how these positions get hired. We have a council manager type of government. That means that the five members of council, the four council members of the area, all have equal say in decisions and can say yes or no about decisions that the manager makes. However, it's really the manager that drives the bus. This is particularly true with hiring city staff. Council can say yes or no about whether a position should be established, but it's up to the manager to fill that position. If any council member, including the mayor, interferes with the manager in hiring a position, it would seem to me that that might be a potential ethics violation. I'm not a lawyer, but I would encourage you to discuss this with your lawyer. If the manager has sworn under oath that this was entirely her idea, nobody on council, including the mayor, had any undue influence, then I guess there's no problem. I think at that point, the only question I have is whether the manager is making wise fiscal decisions in light of the looming budget deficit. Something else to think about in a lot of decisions in the future. If council votes on something with the knowledge that there may have been an ethical issue involved, are they then complicit in the potential ethics violation? And will that come back to haunt them potentially? Again, not a lawyer, but you have one at your disposal. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Bob, Roger?
Well, everything I want to talk about was shut down today, so we're going to go in a different direction. And I would please ask everybody on city council refrain from talking when I'm talking. I have never interrupted anybody ever. If you want to have an open forum, I'll be glad to have it with you, but let me speak my piece. There's a lot of, a lot of things going on in the city of Meadville, and I disagree with city council on most of them. Because I have not heard anything yet that you've done to improve the budget. Nothing. I listened to January, or October 26 meeting, and the only thing I heard about it was, well, we'll talk about it in '23 or '24 and soften the blow for people. Now, what does that mean? To me, it means that there's no leadership. None, none whatsoever. Now, I'll tell you a few stories about things in the city of Meadville. I went down to the Tox the other day, went in there, and there was a guy in a cart, electric cart, walking around the city, around the thing, putting items in his basket and stuff. And I followed him around a little bit, and they had a helper there helping him. They followed him all the way through the store, piled the stuff up. He had lobster, he had steaks, he had candy, he had pop. I followed him in line because I had one bag, and after he checked out, he went outside, they pushed him outside in this electric cart. He went over, and he had a bicycle there with a wagon behind it. He had a mask on with an oxygen mask, ripped the thing off, put it in his pocket, got up from the chair, loaded everything in a basket, and jumped in and pedaled away. Now, he paid for all this with a welfare card. What does this tell me about the city? After I got my car, drove up, he's pedaling his bike into Burger King to eat. This has become a welfare city. My God, this is terrible. Why can't we have a little input from people who are not on welfare? We want to take and have the people that have money and input put in. Okay? Because they're the main driver of the city right now. I don't see city council coming up with anything to fix any problem whatsoever, except maybe making a few parks, maybe spending some money that should be spent on sidewalks. I have a lot of people come up every day and say, why are they spending the money on these things when we don't need them done? There's maybe 100 people going to use the park up at all these parks. I mean, they're fine, they're fine, they're fine. But we need the money put where it needs to be put. Now, a few years ago, I went down and I paid my taxes. I took $8,000 in tax money, went up there to pay them. It was late at night, the last day of, you get a rebate. I walked in there, and there was 25 cents short on it. They said, we can't accept that. Now, who in their right mind wouldn't take $8,000 and say, I got 25 cents, and just put it right on the table and say, thank you very much for your loyalty paying your taxes on time? I almost walked out and didn't pay the taxes. Almost, but I didn't. After we got back home, there was a clerical error. Added everything up. It wasn't us, it was the city people that made the error, not us. Where are we going? This is not right. You people have to took and look at the people that are paying the taxes and doing everything right in the city. I pay my taxes every year, all the rest of these people pay their taxes every year, and what do we get? Oh, nothing, nothing. The city has a good infrastructure on the way they pick up leaves, they plow the snow, they have a good police department, I agree with all that, we have a good fire department, I agree with all that. I just want the balanced budget. Not two years from now, not four years from now, I want it right now where my tax dollars are being spent. I have heard nothing, nothing, nothing at all from you people. Period. Nothing. I leave it to the rest of the people here. Have a good comment.
Monica Harden, later?
So I didn't actually prepare a speech at this point, I didn't really see the point. I oppose the rental inspection program. I oppose hiring an independent contractor at $18 an hour to be a social media promoter, which I believe you already have someone doing your social media posts. So please stop wasting our money, thanks.
Alicia?
I'm here to speak to two now, non-agenda items. One is the hiring of an independent contractor, the second is the rental inspection program. First, I want to say I'm saddened to say, meeting after meeting, it feels as though some of our voices have fallen on deaf ears. Not one citizen or taxpayer should ever feel as though their voice doesn't matter to council, and recently for some, it has. Next, I want it to be known that I do not wish for my tax dollars to pay for an independent contractor to promote the city's social media presence. It's evidenced enough from social media postings prior to this person coming aboard that the city has the capability to do these things already and has been. Why pay yet another person and further thrust our city into a financial deficit? I also had some questions. If they're to deal with social media, why then would they shadow the mayor? Also, how many hours per week will this individual be working? If we assume a modest 15 hours per week, that's $270 per week, which is $14,000 per year, we would pay somebody to manage social media. Finally, I want to echo Marsha's thoughts that council should willingly pay to subject themselves to a property inspection. I believe no other person's privacy should be invaded until council's has been. But also, no inspection or registration shall commence until all of council's housing passes this inspection. Council should be the prime examples of the standard that Meadville should be. If you disagree, then a program should not move forward as it imposes undue burden upon others that you yourself do not wish to be subjected to. Part of being on council is listening to your people. Part of it is also having public discussions. The public should have time to fully inspect what you're talking about and get answers to the many questions that they're regarding this rental inspection program. So don't just pass it through just to pass it through. I implore you to host public outreach sessions, much like you did with the zoning update. Have times available during the day, some in the evening, and on the weekend. Have a full draft available for all of you in person here and online. Let the public come at convenient times and answer the many questions presented to you. Nobody is able to know any of this information until after it is presented to city council. Over 50% of your population will be directly affected by this program. Do the right thing and give them time to ask questions, have a proper discussion in front of the public about everything coming forward, and then decide. There's no timeline when it comes to doing the right thing by your people. Just do the right thing by all of your people and let this information be examined and questioned by the public during outreach sessions. We have the right to know exactly word for word what's in this program, not just the bird's eye view you are offering us. Please consider community engagement. Let's actually engage our community in meaningful conversations and give everyone the time they deserve to really understand this program. Thank you.
Forgive me, I can't make out the first name, I believe the last name is Hayes. Greg?
My name is Greg Hayes, and I have been up at the Erie International Airport for the last 20 years. I didn't really expect to see anybody down here that I know, even though I was a graduate in 1980 from Sec. 111 High School. Obviously, the solicitor I know, I know. I'm glad to see you guys here, and it does make me feel quite at home. I spoke to Erie City Council this morning, and what I'm speaking about here is we're at 13306 Corporate Drive at the Meadville Airport. And my school has moved down here, it'll be one year this month. Starting in May, coming up this, coming May 9th through the 15th, we are having the Tuskegee Airman come in here. We are going to also have the Niagara League and the War of 1812 coming in here. We also have the National Warplane Museum and various other events. This will probably be the largest event that's ever happened at Meadville Airport. And we've had the blessing of the airport authority there. Full disclosure, I sit on the airport authority of Erie. I'm talking from a private citizen now. I wanted to kind of let you guys know, just as I did with Erie, we're going to be reaching out to all the school districts in both Erie and Crawford to try to make this a full educational event. We want to let you know. Obviously, I've left my cards with you guys. Please feel free to reach out to me at any time. I'm very easy to deal with. I just want to, like I said, I'm new down here, but I feel like I'm kind of coming home. So it's something we're very proud of. There's going to be a lot of other events, things that I have been doing up in Erie for a long time, now we're going to start doing down here. It's not one over the other, this is just moving and trying to reach more people than we have ever done before. So if you ever have any questions, anything I can do to help, anything that I can do. We also have the Northwest drone training program. We've done anything from state police to FBI to private citizens, we do a lot of work there, and we just got permission to use the Crawford County Fairgrounds for training. So we're really kind of excited about it. It affords us a lot of leeway to be able to do some stuff that we have not been able to do in the past. And like I said, I just wanted to come down, introduce myself, and if you ever have any questions, please reach out to me at any time. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Ron, Erwin?
I'm Ron Erwin, and I know I've stood up here many times, and the only thing that comes to my mind is taxation without representation. We've talked to, we're blowing the face, not a dang thing's been done about the flooding that is caused by illegal fill behind the Common Roots Building. We've had all summer, we're heading into winter, and I'm going to deal with it again next spring, and nobody, they showed up one time, and absolutely nothing was done. The climate action plan was stuck down everybody's throats, even though a majority of the people opposed it. Rental inspection program, same thing, trying to cram it down their throats. The people are acting like dictators, okay? You was elected to represent the people, as Alicia said, and you are completely failing to do that. Now, whether you go home and pat yourself on the back every night after these meetings thinking, wow, I won again because we screwed over the taxpayer again, it's getting pretty sickening. It really is absolutely sickening that you do not have time of day to listen to anybody but your little groupies, and it's an old, broken record. So come election time, whenever you're ousted, and everything that you've done, put in place to try to destroy this city will be undone. Because your rental inspection program will be a failure of epic proportions, and I guarantee it. Because just as Erie found out, you don't have money to start it, you don't have money to keep it up, and $38 sure as heck ain't going to fund it. And if you want to take and try to BS the public about it, which some of them seem to be believing it, but anybody that knows numbers knows it isn't going to happen. You're not going to fill out one single report for $38. And I have people that will vouch for that, that used to do that, retired from the fire department, and they said it is not going to happen at $38. So again, you're going to penalize the taxpayers of this city because you promised to make a duplicate program that none of you even knew existed, Jim might have. But you guys even admitted, Larry admitted he didn't know it, but yet you're willing to rubber stamp in a duplicate program. Meanwhile, there's real issues in this city that could be taken care of. And being boastful about all the grant money, oh, wow, look how much money we got coming in for Heidi Cooper Park. And exactly, you're going to invest, what, $1.2 million to $2 million in Heidi Cooper Park? Do you really think that you're going to promote tourism into this area to come to see Heidi Cooper Park? I don't even, I guarantee you walk outside this city and ask anybody if they even heard of Heidi Cooper Park, or if they know where it's at. And you're going to have a rough time finding them. So stop wasting money, as Bob said, fix the budget. Or don't you understand how to do that? Don't you not understand that you need to bring businesses into this city, not chase them out like you're trying to chase the landlords out? And you're trying to change zoning to regulate hours of business for different businesses that may want to come to town? You're going to tell them that they cannot afford to be here because they can't even open the hours that they want to be open. You have completely 100% negative impact on this city since the day you guys took office. And you, all the time, Jim speaks very intelligently, has the knowledge, and autumn, you cut him off almost every single time he tries to speak. That is absolutely rude of you. Good night.
Statements, let me say so.
Council members' statements?
Well, I'm sorry. I just wanted to welcome Bob. Thank you to everyone who participated in the survey, and thank you for your comments tonight. Just, and if you have something written, I always appreciate getting an email from, like, if you would send those notes to me, I appreciate it, Frank. I know you guys didn't have anything, but, you know, please email me your comments, your thoughts, I really appreciate it, and I do listen. I would encourage you to come to the budget sessions because we are doing this interactive thing, we do want your feedback. And I don't have the dates memorized in my head, obviously, so, but they're on there, they're on the website, and we do want your feedback. Greg, it sounds like you're doing really wonderful things at the airport. Greg, it sounds like you're doing really wonderful things at the airport, and that's really exciting. Thank you for bringing some great life and good energy. And Tim, and Jim, and Amy, thank you so much for all the work on the bonds.
Yeah, Ron, some things you say, you're right, right? We were elected, you're right, we were elected to represent the people of the city of Meadville. Specifically, we were elected by the people who live here, right? Those are the people who...
Out of the college. You're busting the college.
Councilmember's statements, sir.
Excuse me, she did not interrupt you, give her the same respect.
We were represented, like I was saying, by the people who live and vote in the city of Meadville. Those people are majority renters, those people are majority living in poverty, don't own property in this city, right? Those are the people that elected us for the things that we ran on, safe, affordable, dignified housing. We ran on a rental inspection program, people voted us in because that's what people want to see. We ran on investing in our public spaces. We are delivering on the parks improvement in the city, parks program, because that's what people wanted to see, right? They spoke with their votes and were accountable to the people who live here in this town. That's who I hold myself accountable to. And to your other point, Ron, I'll say, I can assure you, I don't go home after these meetings feeling anything remotely close to good, right? I beat myself up about all the work that we could be doing. And there's always more to be done. Certainly, you can't expect me to leave after tonight's meeting thinking I'm gonna feel good. So, I don't want anybody to think that. There's so much work here, and when I have to answer to neighbors and friends in this town who are suffering, or whose lives could be better, I'm, I'm, I... That's what I measure myself against, and I assure you, it doesn't feel good. I do try to make myself available, I've got office hours twice a week. I've got an email that I check and respond to, so please do reach out to me. I am listening, but I'm listening to more folks than just the people in this room. A few other points I want to make. I moved to eliminate the independent contractor from the meeting tonight. Just want to be transparent about that. I didn't feel ready to make that decision. I didn't, that wasn't something that we talked about. I don't think that we really kind of had a clear sense of the role and the description, and to folks' points, right, like the budget is looming and it's big, and is that the right move? So, I did not feel comfortable moving forward on that vote or with that position at this time. I think we can explore other options, right? We've had success in the Vista Program, I think there's other things that we can explore if we think we need help. And so, I'm gonna try and do that and see how, if we think that we need help in this area, right? What are the other ways we can get that? Yeah, and the last point I want to address is the budget. And I guess I just want to remind us that we're not alone in how rough our budget is. That's due in large part to the way that municipalities in Pennsylvania have to rely on property taxes across the state to fund the way that we, the way that we're able to operate. And the fact that most, that about half of our town is owned by nonprofits doesn't help, right? But we're not alone in that, that's true with lots of municipalities across the state. And that's been something that's been plaguing the city for a while, right? It's not new this year, it's not new in the last three years. That's been true for a while, it's something we're trying to reroute. But frankly, like, and I think we'll see this when we're presenting our budgets, like the cost of providing health insurance, the cost of paying salaries, like goes up every year. Like, these are the, those are the things, it doesn't necessarily come from this kind of insurance, so. But what a fun budget season it'll be. I echo Gretchen's points, and I invite people to get involved, and I'm glad we're making space for that.
Jim?
Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody who came here tonight and took the opportunity to speak, or not, as they choose. We do value your input. On another note, I'd like to note the passing of Commissioner David Glenn and our former Assistant Fire Chief, Bill Schnaber. Both good people, great citizens, they're a credit to their community and their families. And we know with sadness their passing. Other than that, I'm anxious to work on the budget, I can hardly get things together.
Does that mean you would adjourn?
I'd like to thank everyone for coming, Armstrong and everyone that had input. And be sure, we are, we are listening. And you know, there's just saying, you can't please everybody. Our, my goal and our goal is for the city. And this, I'm just gonna say, this back and forth, you know, that's what it's, it's just been back and forth. There's never been a sit-down because it gets too hot, you know? There are things that, yeah, you know, we maybe should, but is it feasible time-wise to address it? Is it up to the property owner? You know, we, there's more things that need to be looked into and understood. It's just more than just the money. Safety and housing, and affordable housing is number one. And as landlords and homeowners, that is your concern, or should be, to have safe housing. Am I correct?
I guarantee you, you will not find it happening.
I'm not pointing, I'm just asking, simple question. So, we've been sitting going back and forth for how long now with anger and attitude, and nobody's willing to give? You know, we, we have, we, you know, we brought this out, this is what the people said they want. We want to work together, we have to work together for this to work, for Meadville to grow. But we cannot continue to have this back and forth and not see any future. You know, you're saying that it's gonna be taken away with next election. From what people I've heard, people want this rental inspection program.
A majority of the people that showed up.
Excuse me, I did not interrupt you.
I know, you're saying something that is contrary to what actually happened.
People I've talked to, okay, and listened to, okay? The votes, the survey, you know, I mean, people are interested and want this. So, instead of us continuing to go around this vicious circle of, "You're not doing this," or "This doesn't..." You know, first and foremost, it is a business for you. That is, that, you know, I see it, if it's my business, I'm gonna be responsible for it, okay? However, there are programs, there's different government grants that I'm quite sure, as a landlord or a property owner, that are available. And if the city can help with that, then let us do that. But don't just throw everything against, say, "No, we're not working." That's what I feel like we're getting, that we're, no, we're not willing to work with you.
Can I speak? Just, I just don't understand why we would have a duplicate program.
See, now, let me explain something. May I, can I take the time to explain? When you're saying duplicate program, that, to my understanding, some of these are, and have been on, but they had no backbone, there was nothing, the city had no recourse to enforce this unless a tenant called and made a complaint, or the fire department was there on a call and saw something. This way, with the registration, it's protecting everyone. And that's what I don't understand, that you don't see, you know, that it's gonna protect your property.
I'll email you.
It's gonna protect your property, and it's gonna help, and it's also gonna... Excuse me, we're not having discussion.
Right, you don't, that's right.
I'm speaking, okay? Because this is my time to make a comment. I listened to what you said. I've listened to every meeting that you've come and said, okay? That's why I'm saying this, because I've listened. I'm not, I'm not pushing you away or throwing you away. I'm telling you, I listen, and this is what I'm feeling.
I don't like, okay, one minute.
But again, please don't, what I'm saying is, we need to try and find a common ground, period. And quit this, it's not gonna work if you're wasting time back and forth. The program is going to go, now we need to know and see how we're gonna put it together. That's it.
I just wanted to know how the law was going.
Move to adjourn. Is there a second? Second.